I would ask our city attorney to report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city council is in closed session this evening on conference with labor negotiator and received an update on the status of negotiations. Council is also in closed session on conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation to potential cases. There's currently nothing to report under that item. However, the city council will reconvene to closed session at the conclusion of the regular city council meeting.
Thank you. If we could have the roll call.
Council members, Howard, yeah, Singleton?
Yeah.
Shelton?
Yeah.
Prue?
Yeah.
Name?
Here.
We will now rise for a moment of silent prayer and we will be followed by the slight salute by PAC 84, again six.
Color guard halt. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, holy defense, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so far off. Color guard dismissed. Audience, please, 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 just seated.
Justine Cockwood reads a video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I would ask for agenda approval at this time. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay. Then we will go to presentation.
First one we have is the water system overview by the Public Works Department.
I got her awful fast. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. With me tonight is Reb Biznet, our Water Division Chief, Lisa Sanders, the Senior Civil Engineer in the Utilities Design Division, and Dennis Longhoffer, Utility Superintendent. Liz.
Um, was up there when Matt came and neither did he.
Yeah. Worked five minutes ago.
Yes.
Five minutes ago, the screen was dark, but the big screen was lit up. Now we have the revert. There we go. Okay. With that, I'm going to introduce Lisa Sanders.
Can you all hear me? Not very good. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, council and mayor. Public Works is happy to present an overview of the city's water system. It's a typical water cycle with rain falling and penetrating the groundwater or running off to the surface water, evaporating into the atmosphere, into water storage, and then repeats the water cycle. This is depiction of the groundwater formations in the city. Hundred feet depth is the static water level. The shallowest aquifer which our current wells are constructed is from 700 to 900 feet. And in this aquifer, there are detectable limits of arsenic and they need manganese treatment. Recently discovered, which we're very happy to have discovered, was a merton formation that is located between 1,400 feet to 1,700 feet, contains no levels of arsenic, very low levels of manganese, although it still will be needed treatment. And we are going to be drilling our new wells down to that deeper level. This will save the city significant amount of money in arsenic treatment costs. There are two types of water sources, surface water and groundwater, and it's important to know that Galt is solely relying on groundwater. The key issues for groundwater are aquifer sustainability and water quality. What is the city doing about groundwater management? Number one, we're updating our urban groundwater management plan. And number two, we belong to a group of the South Area Water Council. Water suppliers are mandated to update their urban water management plan every five years. And Galt first did theirs in 2005 and is now updating it for 2010. The urban water management plan is for the city to meet current and future water demands. Plan requires reduction in consumption by 20% by 2020, water demand projections, drought planning, rebate incentives, and conservation education. As part of Galt's general plan also, the city is looking to do the following: city's commitment to water conservation, landscape conservation and programs, and water waste prohibitions. The South Area Water Council is a committee of water stakeholders, and the goal of the council is to develop a groundwater management plan for the region. The groundwater management plan gives stakeholders an approach for protecting and sustaining groundwater. Plan includes, and we've just completed the draft version of this plan, monitoring of wells, groundwater recharge, recycled water, and possible conjunctive use of surface water and groundwater. I'd like to turn it over now to Reb Biznet, our Water Division Chief, and he'll talk more specifics about the water system.
How's everybody? Um, just kind of overview of kind of what we're going to talk about. I believe this is... Okay. Uh, turn around. Okay, perfect. Without a doubt. This is not really my thing, but we're going to go through it. This is very similar to a tour that I gave the city council a while back on the water system and kind of how it works. So this is just an overview. We have wells, treatment plants, reservoirs, distribution mains, and the services that we have. This is kind of an overview of the city, the wells that are in the city, the reservoirs that are in the city, and kind of where your water comes from. The system is a loop system. It's not, you know, this well supplies your house or this area. So if this well goes down, we can still push water across town and be able to fill that in. You know, we go from summertime pumping as much water as we can, getting it out, to wintertime, we might be able to run the whole city on two wells. So that's a big difference. We have seven wells. They range in depth from 800 to 1,100 feet. The new wells, as Lisa talked about, will drill down to about 1,700 feet. Big cost savings in the chemicals for the arsenic treatment plant. Total water production for 2010 was 1.685 billion gallons. Doesn't really mean a lot to you until we start talking down here. March, we pumped about 56 million gallons. That's about 78 gallons per person, per day in Galt for the month of March. Go down to July, 247 million gallons. That's 347 gallons per person, per day. That doesn't mean you're drinking more water. What that means is we're putting a lot more water out in the system on lawns, pools, things like that. And that's where conservation becomes, you know, pretty important. Water production over the years, 2000, you can see about 1.5 billion. We peaked out in 2007, kind of steadily came up. 2005, '06, I believe, was kind of the start of the, you know, the downturn in the economy. I believe we've lost some residents, but also in this, a big factor is when you're talking about the weather. Last summer was a pretty mild summer, so we didn't have to pump out as much water. 2007, we had the ability, we got another well online that allowed us to pump more water, get a little bit more out in the system, and it's kind of declined since then. We have five treatment plants. In those treatment plants, it consists of chemical treatment, filtration, and then we treat for iron, manganese, and arsenic. These are some pictures of just a few things that we do have. This system right here is an OIT Operator Interface, allows the guy to look and see what's going on in the field and which valves are open, which valves are closed, which ones are supposed to be open, which ones are closed. These are chemical metering pumps. A lot of new technology from when I first started 18 years ago. You know, basically, you pump it out of the ground, threw a little chemical, a little chlorine in it, and out it went. These have changed these processes a lot. Health versus aesthetics in the water. You have many, many different things we have to test for in the water. You have iron and manganese, which you hear a lot. Those are Class II aesthetics, meaning those are the kinds of things that'll stain your toilet, that'll make brown water, it'll collect in your hot water tank. And every once in a while, most manufacturers recommend that you drain your hot water tank at least once a year. Most people don't know that. I recommend people do it about every six months, just use a little water out of the bottom of it. The chlorine levels, get, you know, a few people each year that call me and tell me, "You've got too much chlorine in your water." Okay, how much do I have in there? Well, I don't know, but there's too much because I can smell it. One other reason that causes that is the lower the level, the more that it will off-gas and you can smell it. Went to a class one time, guy took the little red and white peppermint candies, and he did this test. He showed us. He said, "Plug your nose for about 30 seconds, put that candy in your mouth, and taste it. It'll only taste sweet. You can't smell the peppermint." Unplug your nose, that peppermint off-gases off of that candy, goes up your nose, and you can tell you're eating peppermint. So that's what chlorine does. When I first got here, our chlorine levels were pretty low. We can go up to four parts. We were under a half a part when I got here. We had more complaints in 12 years. We made that change right away, but we brought it up. We run about three quarters of a part to one part. Like I said, the state says I can have up to four parts in the water. I don't like putting in any more than I have to, so we do try to keep it low. Flushing, you see guys out with a truck flushing the fire hydrants. We do get sediment, iron bacteria in the lines. Iron bacteria grows from when this system first went in, in the '50s, the iron bacteria and the steel pipes and things, and it just continues through the system. We go out, we turn on a fire hydrant, get a large volume of water moving through there, that flushes that out, gets it out of the system, so it won't come into your house, hopefully. We still get a call, a few calls every now and then. Different things will trigger that as far as the brown water. When you go from, in the fall and the spring, and those wells change, like I said, everything is a loop system. So when that flow changes, this well shuts off or this well kicks on, it changes that flow a little bit, and there is a chance that you could get some. We don't always get it, but there's a few every now and then. The chemicals that we use to treat the water, three of these are for the arsenic only. Carbon dioxide, we use to lower the pH of the water. Sodium hypochloride is the chlorine that we use. Been using that for years and years and years as for disinfectant in the water. Also, that works as an oxidizer for your iron and your manganese. Like steel would rust, iron and manganese will oxidize. When it oxidizes, it allows that filter to grab it and pull it out of the water, and the water goes on through. Ferroc chloride is used in the arsenic removal. You need iron in the water to remove the arsenic. This is a standard procedure across the country. On our wells that don't have as much iron, those are the ones that we can have problems with arsenic in. So we add iron to the water for those filters to pull out. Sodium hydroxide, caustic soda, that's used to raise the pH on the other side. We lower it to 6.5, raise it up to about six and a half, or seven and a half, going into the reservoirs, so that it's safe to go out. It's not hard on our system, it's not going to eat anything up. Filters and filter media. If you can kind of imagine this as a can, in the bottom of this can are under drains. The water actually comes in the top, goes through an anthracite media, and then it goes through a multimedia system where they get smaller and smaller and smaller and keep pulling out more particles. So we run this system, we run water through there, 10 gallons a minute per square foot down to the bottom. In the bottom of this is some heavy gravel that's around the drains that go in there. That pretty much makes up the filter. So the water's coming in the top and it's going down through there. When we backwash, we reverse that flow. The heavy gravel in the bottom does not allow or doesn't move, okay? So it stays steady. But what it does, it makes that water move evenly back up through that media, just like washing your hands or anything, scrubbing your hands together when you're washing them. That's what we're doing with that media, is we're washing it, we're scrubbing it, and washing that water back over to the reclaim tank. When it goes into the reclaim tank, we're in the process right now of working on reclaiming that water. We have a floating suction, it goes in there for a certain amount of time. Everything that we have backwashed out of the water settles to the bottom, we pull the clean water off the top, and we only drain down about 75% of that. Reclaim it, run it back through the system. Okay, this is a basic water treatment process. You have a well. Like I said, you have CO2 here, carbon dioxide, that feeds in, lowers the pH on this arsenic treatment plant. Then you add the chlorine. Your chlorine is an oxidizer and a disinfection, disinfectant, to make sure the water's clean, but also to oxidize those minerals. These chemical feed pumps that you seen earlier, picture of a larger picture, that's what sets a pace in there. We set that based on flow or pump setting or a desired amount going in there. Then we use ferroc chloride. It's a coagulant, but it's also the iron that we need to pull the arsenic out. Then it goes through these reaction vessels here, goes into the side, on the backside of these is where they're joined, then it goes through a second one. We're now able to use mixers and eliminate these reaction vessels. So on our new plant that we're currently working on now, we will no longer have to have these. That's $35,000, $40,000 worth of savings right there on those tanks. So we can put an inline mixer, add the chemical, and mix it together. Then it comes down, after that chemical's been added, goes through filtration, and then it goes, adjusts the pH on the arsenic system again, and it goes into the reservoirs. In the reservoirs, it sits on demand from pressure. Pressure drops so much, then this booster pump says, "Okay, the pressure's this low, I need to kick on and run," and bring that pressure back up to an acceptable level or where we ask it to run to. Sample and testing. Treatment site sampling, we pull between 600 and 1,000 samples a year from our sites, depending on... We have monthly samples we do, quarterly samples, annual samples, and triannual samples that we have to do. We're making sure at all times that this water is safe to drink. I have a lot of friends that live in this town with little kids. If it wasn't right, it wouldn't be going out. Distribution sampling, weekly, we go out, we have distribution sites, we have sites in the distribution system all over town that allow us to go out, pull a sample right out of the system, out amongst the houses, to make sure that that water is safe. Those results go straight to the lab, or it goes to the lab, then the results go straight to the state. If there's any problems at all, they call us back. With all this sampling that we do, we put out an annual consumer confidence report. When that comes in the mail, don't throw it in a round file. You know, a lot of people don't even recognize what it is. It says right on there, "Consumer Confidence Report," okay? When that comes, take a look at it. See what's in the water. See what we've been doing and what's going on. Also with this, we do an annual, or we do an annual report that goes to the state. We also have monthly reports that go to the state, report what we've been doing, what we've been treating, what all our levels are. It's real redundant. They want it all the time, what's going on, what's going on. Laboratory services costs us about $40,600 per year to do, to pull all those samples to make sure that it's right. It's a huge cost, but it's a necessary cost. We currently have four reservoirs, about 9 million gallons in storage. If you can see right here, this is one of our reservoirs. This is a 3 million gallon reservoir. See this guy standing right down here? In July, August, we go through about three of those a day. The number doesn't really mean much to you, but you look at that picture right there, that's a whole bunch of water going out. So that's one of the things. It's a lot of water that goes out on lawns, pools, and things like that that we have to really watch. The booster pump stations that are part of these reservoirs, like I said, as that pressure drops in the system, that booster pump senses that pressure drop, kicks on and runs. We have multiple pumps that can kick on. Fire flow, if there's a fire in the area, they just start kicking on as that pressure starts dropping, so we can meet fire demand. There's approximately 96 miles of water line in the city of Galt, approximately 7,325 water connections, and approximately 870 fire hydrants. I'm not positive, I think that number might be a little bit low, but it's pretty close. With all these connections, it's a lot of water going out. 2009 and 2010, these were the complaints that we had received. Taste and odor, that can be multiple things. Everybody's taste and smells a little bit different in their house, what they have going on, they've changed plumbing. We find all kinds of things when we get these complaints. They're not always about the water, they're about sometimes what somebody's done in the water. Color, like I said, the brown water occasionally you'll see. Pressure, high and low. We get pressure complaints a lot. If you have a filter system, a softener, make sure you service that thing and check it. We had a lady that had a house 10 years ago, she moved into it, she didn't want the softener, so she disconnected it, but she left the filter in. We couldn't believe it. For the last year, it took her about five to 10 minutes to brush her teeth. She couldn't get any water through. It was just because nobody had ever changed that filter, she didn't know it was there. We went in, told her, asked her to remove that filter, and she was just doing backflips. She couldn't believe all the water that she had. Water outages, somebody calls in and says, "I don't have any water." Generally, that's not going to happen because that's a loop system. We occasionally will have a problem. Sometimes the gardeners come by, the sprinklers are running, they turn off the house valve. Nobody knows it. They come home and say, "I don't have any water." We go out and try to figure out what's going on. So for the 22,982 people that we have in Galt, received 31 complaints, 21 complaints there. These are the operators in the water staff. Combined, these guys have 100 years of experience, right around 100 years, a little bit over, but right around 100 years of experience working in water and pumps and things like that. These are the guys that, when we get alarms at these sites, they're out at, you know, 2 o'clock, 2:30 in the morning, making sure that you have water when you wake up that next morning. I received a call right here, called one of my guys, he said, "I'm already on." So we, these are the guys that make sure that you have water each day. Is there any questions?
Listen, what's on here?
Nice report, thank you.
Thanks.
You did a great job. Obviously, you know a lot about water. And I just wanted to mention that this is part of our city manager's plan to make the citizens familiar with the different departments in the city and who's doing what, and hopefully we appreciate you a little bit more. Thank you so much. Let's give him a hand. Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing, that we did very much appreciate the tour when you took it on, took us on it. Had a lot of things.
Good, I'm glad to have you guys there, because that was the first time that the council's ever come here and been in the water. I was ready to bet. When something comes in here, you guys know it, what's going through, what we're having.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation, city clerk.
California Waste Recovery Systems, solid waste and recycling.
Good evening, round and mayor, and honorable city council persons. I'd like to introduce my company tonight. I'd start off with, first off, I'm Dave Bakareza, and my company is California Waste Recovery Systems. With me tonight is my wife Candace, who is also an owner in the company with me, it's her and I own the company. We're a local company, and we've been servicing here in Galt since 1984. And in fact, my family has been in the solid waste business, recycling business, since 1927. So I pretty much grew up on the back of a garbage truck, and I'm a third generation garbage man, and I'm pretty proud of that. I'm also very proud of the people that work for me. There's about 17, 18 jobs here in Galt that it takes to get the recyclables, the green wastes, the recycling off the curb. And those people come in every day. You know, they work here, they buy their groceries here, they participate in the community, and I just want you to know that they really care about their job. And a lot of times, I think we just kind of arrive and disappear, and nobody knows we're there. But at any rate, of those jobs, there's about a million dollars, a million and a half dollars a year that turns through the local economy from wages that go out to those folks that live here. In addition to that, you know, we buy a lot of our fuel here, we buy parts here, we buy tires here, we buy all the things that it takes to support an organization of our size. You know, when you think about it, you know, we come to your house twice a week, once for the recycling, once for the trash, or your green waste, whichever it might be. And we do that 52 weeks a year, and there's 6,800 homes. And so we're out there, over 700,000 services a year that we perform. And once in a while, you know, we're going to make a mistake, but we like to think that we learn from our mistakes and correct them, and we become a better job. So I would like Jack Fiori, Vice President and General Manager, to come up and give you a little bit of background about the services we do have, as well as some programs that we're going to roll out, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have afterwards.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Excuse me. The current, our current services in Galt include our residential program. We offer four cart sizes for trash, two cart sizes for recycling, and a 96 gallon cart for yard and garden waste. Our commercial- for yard and garden waste. Our commercial program offers seven different container sizes, and we provide services up to six days a week. We offer three roll-off bin sizes for industrial facilities, construction sites, or single-use projects. And we also offer bulky waste collection. Residents can call two times each year and set out up to four cubic yards. This slide shows an example of what can be set out, and also shows the dimensions of what a four cubic yards looks like. You can see we can accept appliances, electronic waste, furniture, general trash, just about anything that you would typically have around the house, other than household hazardous waste. The next thing is household hazardous waste, and we host an annual household hazardous waste event each year. This slide shows the acceptable materials for that event, including automotive fluids, pesticides, herbicides, paint, solvent, medicine, and tires. This year's household hazardous waste event is May 21st, so a couple weeks from now, and it's open to all Galt residents, and it's timed to coordinate with the city shredded event, the same day, same location. Our rates provide great value. This slide shows your rate, which is the green bar, compared to nine other cities, which are the blue bars. And those nine cities each offer an identical service level to our standard service level here in Galt. Our agreement calls for us to be no more than the average of those nine cities. The average of those nine cities is the red bar, and if you do the math, we're about almost 20% lower than the average. Our residential recycling program helps offset the expenses that we have related to trash and yard and garden collection. The slide shows everything that's acceptable, and shows how much more we take than just redemption value bottles and cans. In fact, there's 22 other items on there that we collect that are removed from your waste stream and recycled. Later this month, we're conducting a demonstration trial with your yard and garden waste, and it's an effort to try and help control costs related to yard and garden collection. This next slide shows Galt's successful recycling results over the past six years. In 2007, the state of California changed their method of accounting from 50% waste reduction to a per capita measurement based upon demographics. So, from that change, now, Galt's maximum allowable disposal is 4.1 pounds per person per day. And as you can see from the slide, Galt is currently at 2.5 pounds per person per day. So, we are well compliant with what the state allows. And either way you measure it, Galt is compliant. And it also confirms, this slide confirms what your citizen survey reported in 2007, and that's 95% of the households in Galt recycle. We're introducing some new services beginning the 1st of July. I brought props. We're collecting household batteries from AAA up through 9 volt, and we'll also be collecting cellphones and their chargers. Residents will be able to put them out curbside, and we will pick them up. In addition to that, once each quarter, we are gonna collect from the residents gently-worn used clothing, and we're gonna forward it to the local nonprofits for distribution through their programs. And then, lastly, as a new education program to make our commercial recycling even more effective, we're in the process of installing this sign on all of our commercial recycling containers in Galt. And as part of the sign exchange, we are also replacing or repainting all of our commercial trash and recycling containers in town. Josh Ponte is also with us tonight. Josh is the Governmental Affairs Advisor for the California Refuge and Recycling Council, and he's gonna explain what's going on in Sacramento that might affect or influence the businesses and residents here in Galt.
Well, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Wanted to, Dave and crew just asked me to give a brief overview of a couple pieces of legislation for you, so you'd have kind of a sense of Sacramento. It's not complete, it's just a couple pieces, so I'll make mention of those. But if you have any questions on any others you may know about, I'd be happy to answer. The first is AB 341 by Assemblyman Chesbro, a measure that would do a couple of three things. But the most important are, one, require all commercial businesses in the state to have a recycling program. So, that would be any apartment of five units or more, and any commercial operation, office, industrial. It's thought that, and this is the third year Assemblyman Chesbro has this bill, Governor Schwarzenegger beat it the previous one, but it looks like this may be a good opportunity this year for Assemblyman Chesbro and this idea of commercial recycling. It's not a mandate on the cities or counties, it'd be a mandate on commercial property owners. The thought is that statewide, we can get another 10 to 12% recycled out of the waste stream. So, that would be a mandate on commercial property owners and businesses. Additionally, in AB 341, there is a provision that would be 75% for a statewide goal for recycling. Again, here, it's not a, this wouldn't be a mandate on cities or counties, local jurisdictions, it would be a goal set at the state level. As you know, now, it's a 50% mandate that Galt has been described as being able to achieve very nicely. This would try to get the department at the state level to try to figure out other ways that they can find some increment of recyclables. We think the commercial piece could be a big piece of that. So, that's a couple of items on AB 341. Another bill that Dave asked me to talk about was AB 298 by Brownlee. Assemblymember Brownlee has a measure that would ban all plastic bags. Several cities in the state have already banned plastic bags. They're a pretty big nuisance for the litter problem, but also for recycling. And that has been a measure that has been through the legislature, stopped in the senate last year, but it probably has a pretty good chance this year. The last measure I thought I just mentioned is a bill by Senator Corbett, SB 515. It's what we call the battery bill. There's this concept that perhaps we should all try to figure out ways to recycle batteries. This bill would require the producers of batteries to create programs of some type, and then get these batteries out of the waste stream so they don't go to the landfill. Your service provider here is already started, or starting that program, obviously, so well positioned for whatever law may come out. And so, those are the three main pieces. There's probably about 60-some pieces just in this issue area that we track, but they wanted me to come out and give a little brief on that, and if there are any questions, I'm available to answer anything as well. Dave, I think's coming up. But on a personal note, I might just mention, I appreciate your service. I served back in the 90s on the Sacramento City Council for one term, and it was a great privilege, but a lot of work. So, I really appreciate what you do. I know from my service on the school board and the city council back then, it was a lot of work. Sometimes I miss it. My wife says, "No, you don't." But I enjoyed it, and so I appreciate your work. So, Dave.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Josh. With that, you know, I'm happy to take some questions. I just wanna make mention, I did miss something in my report, I think that was pretty important, is going back to my employees, you know, my average employee has been there 18 years. And I think that speaks to the quality of the employees that we do have. They're dedicated, and it's a pleasure to come to work every day and work with these people, because they're committed to what they do. And I think our numbers show that, you know, we provide an excellent service at a competitive price. And I'm proud of that, and we hope to be here for a long time. I wanna be your go-to guy when it comes to trash, and be able to answer any questions you might have, and come up with the programs that it's gonna take to get this fine city through the next 20 years.
Any questions for Dave?
I've got one question. You said you're gonna recycle batteries and cellphones. You guys gonna have another special container I'm gonna have to put out, or how's that gonna work?
No. Actually, what you do is you take, and you just take and place this right on top of the container. There's gonna be some public awareness that goes out with our newsletter, and we'll be touching every customer out there so that they understand how the program. But rather than going and then another container to put out, or another plastic bag to get thrown in the landfill, you know, we're just, we're going with a pretty simple, straightforward, put it on top of the can, and the guy will pick it up and put it in a separate compartment on the truck. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, just thanks.
Dave, before you sit down, I'd like to share with the community that, just one second. Your company is a great partner with the city of Galt. Whenever we're trying to clean up a neighborhood, or do any kind of special event, you're always there for us, and thank you very much. And with that, I think we do have a question from someone in the audience. If you wanna come up, you'll have to come up to the speaker.
I'm sorry, I really need you to come up, because to the audience, they can't hear what your question is, and it's not gonna make much sense as far as getting an answer.
And it was with picking up dog waste and getting rid of it. And we eliminated one can, we don't put it in the recycle. So, the other one was, which one, either the garbage or the lawn and garden?
Actually, if it goes into the trash, it's the best spot for it.
Yes. That's simple. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If there aren't any other comments, okay.
Okay. I've known Jack and Dave for a long time, and your lovely wife, it's nice to meet you tonight. I know you guys don't like to toot your horns, and you are a great partner to have for the city of Galt. I think people are not aware of how much you give back to the community every year. Whenever anybody's having an event or anything, and they need some waste disposal, you're always there to give it to them. You've contributed to my organization for years, the coats and cans at the curb, and for Christmas baskets giveaway, and I just think that you guys are a real asset to our city, and I wanna thank you for being here and being so conscientious.
Thank you for letting us be part of it.
Dave, you got two good-looking ladies with you. Could you have your wife stand up?
Well, I have a bunch of good-looking ladies. I'll have them all stand.
Thank you so much for coming, and thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Tonight, you're learning all about how the city works from water to garbage.
Yes. Very important stuff.
Yes, it is.
Wow, we're losing half our audience here.
All right, we'll now go into public comments. City clerk?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the tables inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheets to the city clerk. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Randy Hensworthson?
I'm so close. Looked like you stepped out.
Oh, I'll come back to him in just a minute. Rick Reese?
I missed the last couple of city council meetings, and I'd like to know what's going on with the farmer's market, if you guys decided to leave it on Lincoln Way, or if you've decided to move it to Smut Park. I don't know what the outcome was, but I believe it was Thursday or Friday, they put up signs, "No parking on Lincoln," stating when the farmer's market was gonna be, and on those days and times, there was gonna be no parking. So, I'm kinda curious on what the outcome is, and what you guys decided. Last time I was here about a month and a half ago, I voiced my opinion again about closing down, you know, the street during business hours, and it's pretty much it.
I would answer your question, if it's okay. We are gonna continue the farmer's market. We feel like it's a big advantage for the city to be able to get fresh vegetables. However, we are experimenting, and not only will it be on Lincoln Way, but we're also having a Saturday market on the east side at Community Park, and so we'll see how that goes.
But you guys decided to leave it on Lincoln?
Yes, we have.
And close the street, and use taxpayers' money to pay for public safety, city people to come out and do the signs and everything, right?
Right. We believe it's a service to the community.
No matter how many businesses it hurts along Lincoln Way?
You know, we haven't heard from anyone but you.
Well, Sam from Amigos Market closes at 8:30, works seven days a week. He's voiced his opinion. He can't come down here, but he'd be willing to write a letterhead, or a letter with his letterhead on it, and same thing goes for Adam, the owner of MetroPCS. So, it's not just me, I'm just the one that's the voice. They can't come down here, their businesses are still open while city council meeting comes on.
Thank you for delivering your message for them as well.
Did we lose? It's Randy, I'm the lobby.
That's all I have. I have a comment.
There he is.
There he is. Randy? Randy, wanna come up?
Here I am. Randy Hummerston, City of Galt. I just wanted to talk a little bit concerning the, it has nothing to do with what else has been discussed tonight so far, but last year, I believe the middle of the year, you sent out a letter to Arizona, or did something to enact a boycott of Arizona over the 1070?
I don't think, that wasn't enough.
Wasn't you?
No.
Okay, well, concerning that, other city governments did around the area. I wasn't sure if you had or not, I didn't have time to look it up today. Anyway, something that, on that subject, something that you might consider sending out a letter to are some of these public unions for the way their memberships and their leadership have behaved in the last few months. You know, you got video and audio of union membership protesting in Palm Springs, for instance, calling for the hanging of Clarence Thomas and his wife, and things like that, making terrorist threats. And the way that they behaved in Wisconsin at the state Capitol, they're defecating all over the place, and nothing ever happening to anybody, nobody, no arrests made. I mean, myself, I've been arrested for allegedly saying something to somebody, and had to go through court for a year and a half for certain situations during a divorce. But these people are caught on tape, video, audio, right there going into bank lobbies, disrupting businesses, and it's not right. And I would like to see our city council address that matter. Send off some letters to the public employee unions that do not have any repression for their membership or doing this, and a shout-out to the membership to have leaders that promote things like this. They should vote their leadership out. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your time. That's all I have under public comment. Then, we will proceed to the consent calendar. There was nothing pulled for that, so I would entertain a motion.
Actually, I'd like to pull you forward.
Okay. Okay. Any other items?
I think I have the same idea, Mark, yeah.
Before, okay.
I just, I just thought the proclamation is such an important thing, especially after recent events in the world, that this might be something that would be voted on separately, as well as read to the public.
Right. I agree.
Would you like to read it, Mark?
Absolutely.
All right.
A proclamation by the City of Galt, California recognizes the Armed Forces Day. Whereas the men and women in our military are currently serving our country all over the world, and whereas our friends, families, and neighbors, as well as their children and grandchildren, are among those serving, and whereas Armed Forces Day is our day to pay tribute and honor to our citizens who served in the Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard, National Guard, and Reserve units, and whereas the City of Galt wishes to honor and recognize the service and sacrifice that members of the Armed Forces and their families gave, and continue to give to the United States. And whereas Armed Forces Day is on the third Saturday of each May, which this year is May twenty-first, two thousand eleven. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City of Galt, California, that we do hereby recognize the service and sacrifice of the Armed Forces, honor Americans in uniform who serve their country in times of war and peace, and do hereby proclaim May twenty-first, two thousand eleven, as Armed Forces Day.
Do you like to make a motion to approve?
I do make the motion to approve, approve this.
I'll second it.
And moved and seconded, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, pass. Now for the remainder of the consent calendar. Yes, please.
Okay, we have three items. Uh, number one, approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings of April nineteenth, two thousand eleven. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. And number three, online, online registration software purchase for the Parks and Recreation Program and services.
Any discussion, questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion approved.
That's been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Powers, aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Uh, we have nothing on the agenda for scheduled matters, uh, regular calendar, culture, and recreation department.
Fiscal Year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, Youth Committee Budget for Activities and Special Events.
Okay, we have Janet Munoz from the Youth Committee, as well as, I believe, Emily Hernandez and Mariah Franco, doing a presentation for the two thousand eleven, twelve, um, budget for the youth that was requested from them regarding the strategic plan.
Hello, again, everyone. Um, again, my name is Emily Hernandez, and this is my good friend, Mariah Franco. This is our budget plan for our youth council for the next year, because our term begins again in June, and we were asked by Parks and Rec if we would present a budget plan and certain events that we would like to do with the city. This event, these events that we are going to show you are to combine both Galt High, Liberty Ranch, and Estrelita High School, because lately, we've all been pretty separated. And now, it's pretty much time that we go and get combined. So, please enjoy our schedule.
Thank you.
So, the following are game ideas and dust. Incorporate them all in the events, make amendments to suit our purpose budget-wise. Teams must be made up of combined Galt and Liberty, or Estrelita students, who are chosen through raffle. We will include dance, and event themes will be decided by the subcommittee, and the subcommittee will also determine the games set and supplies needed. Total budget for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve is fifteen hundred dollars. So, that includes events and the games. So, our goals are to have fun, cheer, unite the youth in a creative way.
The first activity that we have is called Big Time Youth. It's a game will, that will have five students, who are chosen by raffle. The categories are title, singer, or sing it. The DJ plays a portion of a song. The host will announce what category they will be playing for. The first person to either name the song, sing the song, or guess the songs, singer, get two points. Five points are required to win the prizes or items students will need in school or other popular items.
Next up, we came up with That's Right, That's Wrong, where the prizes or items students need in school are other popular items. Five contestants are drawn from the audience. They have the chance to guess the total price of the school supplies shown by determining the correct numbers that will fill in the blanks. The numbers will be created on a huge poster board. If one of the contestants gets the correct prize, price, that contestant will win the said school supplies and five dollars. The others that did not get the correct price will receive a consolation prize.
The next activity here is called Unity Relay. The prizes, again, will be items students will need for school and other popular items. It's about, uh, it's a competition where youth, the youth can cheer for all students. Have four people per team, combined with Galt High, Liberty Ranch, and Estrelita students, to run an obstacle, obstacle course. The first part could be a contestant can ride a tricycle to the next contestant, where the second person must spin around on a baseball bat with their head. Then, they must try to walk and tag their contestant. The third contestant can do something like pop a balloon on the bottom in a, on a chair, then must run to the last person, who will unroll a roll of toilet paper that is on a pole. The team who gets to the end of the roll first is the winner.
And next, we have Patch of the Years. The contestants stand behind a movable fence. Youth participants have different colored rings. From there, they have to try and get the rings to wrap around as many of the tubes as possible. In the center of the raised platform, where many plastic tubes stand tightly beside each other. These plastic tubes are labeled with ages, with the center tube eighteen as a jackpot.
The next game is One, Two, Three Fun. Students from Galt High, Liberty Ranch, and Estrelita High Schools will partner up. Twelve partners are chosen, questions are a variable, given with the answer either one, two, or three. Players then fall in line to the number of their, of their choice. Then, who chooses the wrong number will be out of the game, and those who choose the right answer number will proceed to the next question. The game continues until one partner set is declared the winner.
Wall of Fortune, where four players are blindfolded and given a dart. They must walk up to the wall and pop the balloons hanging on the wall one by one. Each balloon corresponds to cash prizes. If a red balloon with a two times is popped, the prizes will double in amount. The player that pops a red balloon first wins. The game lasts for a minute, or until the player pops three blue balloons, which represent game over.
Um, this is events that can happen for all youth, and sometimes, um, teenagers. Um, this one is Kids Stay at the Pool or Skate Park. You, um, it'd be all ages during the month of August. The place would be the Aquatic Center, or the Skate Center, which are right next to each other. The admission would be three dollars. Items they would need to bring are swimsuits, and some, um, inflamables, and snacks, which would probably cost us around fifty dollars. And then, we'll need sponsors, chaperones, and lifeguards when we do the pool day, and also possibly an empty.
And next, we have Sports Day, where teams are made up of Galt, Liberty Ranch, or Estrelita students combined. In the month of December, at the Galt Community Park, admission is free. Items needed are balloons, streamers, and snacks. Um, our theme is undecided. We need sponsors and chaperones, and raffle prizes.
The next event is a Halloween party of all ages during the month of October at the Twol Hall. Admission would be five dollars. We'd need balloons, streamers, and prizes, which is around a hundred dollars. We'd need a DJ, and then, we would need food, and, um, sponsors, and chaperones. The event would be Dance, Best Costume Contest and Games.
We have the Glee Club, where a music group must have Galt and Liberty, or Estrelita students combined, dance shows, dance showdowns, karaoke contests, and singing contests. It will be open to the public around the month of December at the Littleton Center. Admission is free, it's three dollars. Items needed are balloons, streamers, and snacks. Our theme is holiday, and we need sponsors and chaperones, and raffle prizes.
The next is the Dance, just for the teenagers, who are both Galt High, Liberty Ranch, and Estrelita students during the month of May. And it would be at the Littleton Center at, um, the mission would be four dollars. Bag of balloons, streamers, photographs, which would be around a hundred dollars. We need a DJ, and food. The theme would be undecided right now, and we need sponsors and chaperones, and possibly raffle prizes, which is another a hundred dollars.
And finally, we have Youth Day at the Park for all ages, around the first week of June, at the Galt Community Park. Admission is free. Items needed are balloons, streamers, and prizes. We need a DJ, catering, our theme is undecided. We also need sponsors and chaperones, and events could be a dog contest and games.
This is our mission statement. We decided to put this in because it shows who we are. Our mission statement is to encourage the youth to participate in activities that are purposeful in building better citizens, stimulate community service in Galt, encourage family participation in building civic unity, strive to emphasize the diversity in our culture by encouraging the interaction within the community, collaborate with organizations developed to the growth of the youth, recognize that it takes all members of the community to sustain change for the better of our youth and families.
And though it is a challenge to break down the wall of competition that has been built, these activities and events are protective measures against negativity. These activities and events are highly beneficial to our community. It will help prevent bullying and graffiti. It will be of aid to eradicate invisible division lines. It is truly in the interest of uniting the youth of Galt, Liberty Ranch, and Estrelita High, gives the chance to open doors, to encourage the youth, and a step towards unity for the community of Galt. And our total budget for the year of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve would be fifteen hundred dollars.
Do we have any questions?
Are there any questions from the council or audience?
No, but good job.
This is just an idea of what we had in mind.
I was wondering, uh, did, you did this yourself?
Right.
Mariah?
Mariah.
Now, including the, the PowerPoint, you put all that together yourself?
Yes, Mariah, the whole entire PowerPoint, I just looked at it. Good job.
Thank you. I would ask our city manager, uh, if you could do a budget like this.
Pretty good.
This, this was fun. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Uh, before you sit down, I will be asking the council later on to consider, uh, an intern, um, with, uh, students from the youth council. But we'll be talking about that at the end of the meeting, so I don't know if you need to leave, uh, for homework, some of those things, but I thought I would mention it to you. And you've made a great presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Janet Munoz, always there for the kids. We appreciate you so much, too, as well, as our Parks and Rec person.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
And actually, we, before the, the, um, the item, we do have a speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the item.
We do have a speaker that wants to come up and, and comment, so you can sit down and let the speaker come up.
Okay.
Al Bolson.
Good evening, Al Bolson, I haven't seen you for a while. I've been out of town visiting grandchildren. But, uh, I live in the City of Galt, I live in the City of Character. I'm with the youth, uh, of Galt all the time, and what I saw just now is probably the most professional display that, that I've seen from the youth committee ever. This is wonderful, and I guess you're considering fifteen hundred dollars, maybe, to get to a youth committee like this. Well, I'll tell you, it, it's very, I know they spend a lot of time on the budget, okay? But there's always extras that keep coming up all the time, and with this economy, they're unknown, and they don't know. Uh, things happen, and a presentation like this, and a future for these kids, or young adults, they call them, is amazing, that, that you could help them in some way. Fifteen hundred dollars, be, by the way, I think, I'm not saying their budget's wrong, but I think a ceiling of a little bit more, maybe even twenty-five hundred. I know it's difficult in times, but when you're one step away from some young adults going to college, uh, and doing what they're doing up there, and the time they spend on it, fifteen hundred dollars is really not that much. Even though their budget may call for it, they're scrimping pretty good. They do fundraisers and everything, and they try that. But I would strongly recommend that maybe you can look into just another thousand dollars to help them out, because you'd be amazed what that investment will bring you in this city. Not only with PR work, but with other children, lower grades, seeing what they're doing. They're going to be wanting to get involved more and more and more. So, the more you put in, and the more they put in, the more you're going to see the youth in Galt grow, and it's part of a character growth, and that's what I love to see. So, please consider it and look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're not good for our budget, but thanks for your comments. Uh, and we have a recommend, recommended action on this item. Um, would you like to read?
Authorize fifteen hundred dollars for the city's youth committee Fiscal Year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, Activities and Special Events Budget.
Is there a motion to that effect from someone?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation to authorize the fifteen hundred dollars for this year. And I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, it is the money item, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers, aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz? Or Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed. You, you kids did it.
Got a lot of work to do. Good job. Good job.
Okay, we will move on now to the next item from the Finance Department.
Loan consolidation agreement between the City of Galt and the City of Galt Redevelopment Agency.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, staff recommends approval of the loan consolidation agreement for internal debt. As way of background, the agency has incurred various debt over the past several years. Projects have been inclusive of Carson's Coating, the Holiday Inn, Galt Glass, Memorial Hospital, Pheasant Run, the library, there's been numerous projects that the agency has been able to assist on. And over the years, several obligations have been repaid. But as of June thirty, two thousand ten, the balance remains at just over five million dollars. Most of this internal debt does not identify the interest rate to be charged, or the defined repayment term. So, this evening, staff is recommending that council and the redevelopment agency board take a couple of actions. The first being that the interest rate on the sewer loan, uh, be changed retroactively. Currently, it's at ten percent, and we would like to change it to the life rate, which is similar to all other internal debt. Secondly, that the term be established for all internal debt, and it would be established at twenty-three years, and that would coincide with the recent redevelopment bond issue that, um, we authorized back in, um, March. Thirdly, that the interest rate for all of the internal debt prospectively be changed to equal the average rate of return on our investments, inclusive of life and our other securities. And fourthly, that staff would present a council, a status report to council and the agency at least every five years, and report on the outstanding amount of debt, and the amounts of, um, payments that have been repaid, and the interest rates that have been charged. The estimated annual repayment amount would be approximately two hundred thirteen thousand dollars per year, which would be due and payable from tax increment. And that would be the amount that would be available after payment of, um, debt issuance, or debt. or debt costs of the two thousand and eleven bonds and amounts due and payable to the, um, community services, consumer services district. The fiscal impact is that there are no additional costs incurred as a result of this consolidation. All annual debt payments will be budgeted in a future budget thus presented to the board and to the city council. So that concludes my report. Um, if council has any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to address them this evening.
Council members, are there questions or discussions? Do we have a public comment?
I have no public comment on this item.
Public comments, okay.
Or no speakership.
So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Just gonna do that. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, please.
I'll second.
Any other discussion, if not, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed. Next item?
Next item, Lincoln Way parking time limits.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this item before you is a discussion providing possible direction to staff regarding changing the parking time limits on Lincoln Way between A Street and C Street. Uh, for the past several years, parking on Lincoln Way between A and C has been imposed for a two-hour maximum time limit. In early two thousand and eight, in response to a local businessman request, uh, the parking be, uh, limit be reduced to one hour or even to thirty minutes. By consensus, council directed staff to go ahead and install some parking tick marks. That's to line up the spaces to try to maximize the number of parallel parking spaces. Uh, and also to reduce the level of parking limit from two hours to one hour. Intended this change was to promote local turnover for customers, businesses. In two thousand and seven, the police department issued two parking tickets for violation of the two-hour parking restriction. In two thousand and ten, the police department issued seventeen tickets for violation of the one-hour parking restriction. Also in two thousand and ten, the Lincoln Way parking lot was completed that provided substantial additional unrestricted parking for the nearby businesses. At the April nineteenth council meeting, council member Singleton requested that the parking time limits on Lincoln be brought back for, um, future discussion and possible action by the, for the council. For sure into the vehicle code, uh, and the municipal code, the city engineer does have the authority and duty to place and maintain, uh, parking regulations and official regulatory signage. If council were to decide tonight to change out the parking time limit, there is a minor fiscal impact relative to the staff time to change the signs out. But that was, those costs can't be absorbed within the current public works streets division bu- budget for the sign materials. And Mike Cruz can install the actual signs. Uh, some alternatives before the council tonight is to leave the parking at the one hour as it is currently posted, increase the parking limit time back to two hours, set another parking time limit such as thirty minutes or something else you deem appropriate, or eliminate the parking limits altogether and all unrestricted parking. With each of my report, we would have to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments on this item?
I just wanna say, there's not enough time. That's why we got so many, uh, tickets, uh, this last year because there's just not enough time to shop, eat lunch over at Gary's if that's what you're gonna do and do your thing there with one hour. That's, I, I would recommend going back to two hours. Uh, it gives people plenty of time. They don't have to rush around. We're not here to cite our citizens. We're here to give them convenience. And, uh, so they don't have to be stressed out about their parking here, here in downtown.
I would agree with that.
Was that why you just brought it? Do you wanted to bring it back to two hours?
That's my recommendation.
Any other discussion on that? Anything from the audience? Any discussion on that? You know, I'm really gonna have to ask you that, excuse me, wait a minute, to speak up here at the microphone.
I just want to make it on record to know that, listen, it's not because Gary has full service. It's because we like to take our time and eat and relax and play, uh, crosswords.
Yeah.
Are you speaking for the young lady?
Yeah, I'll speak for her too.
Okay.
Gary, can you state your name so we have it on?
Uh, my name's Gary Tuttle. Uh, I have business here on Lincoln Way. And, uh, we would like to have it, you know, increased at least to two hours. Um, I had one young lady who was in my restaurant, uh, just having coffee and doing some homework, didn't realize there was a time limit and got a, whatever, forty-two dollar ticket. So that's a pretty expensive cup of coffee, uh, to do some homework. So we would like to have it extended back up to at least two hours. Some of the, the shopkeepers would like to have it eliminated altogether. But, uh, it's whatever you deem, uh, reasonable, so.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on that matter? Okay, we're, uh, looking for some directions to get to the staff.
Randy wants to speak.
Okay.
Just wanted to say I, I agree with that reason. It, uh, gives us a little bit of a chance to get our law enforcement back to doing time to do what they need to do instead of being a revenue agent out there. Get back to fighting crime.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay. So we have some suggestions, some alternatives. What's the direction that we wanna give staff on this? Councilman?
I gave my direction, but I wouldn't approve it. It would be two hours.
Are you looking for a motion?
I have agreement. I'm motioning to such.
Let me ask the city attorney committee.
I thought they were gonna have to discuss it.
Can we take action on that?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion to change it back to two hours. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have a first and a second. Um, consensus vote or roll call? Not a roll call? Okay. All in favor of changing the parking limit to two hours, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion is passed. You now can park for two hours. Oh.
After the signs.
Yeah. There'll be a time limit, right? Before that is effective?
Um, what, eight tomorrow morning will be okay? It'll probably take us a couple, I may, we may have to order signs. Yeah, it, uh, it may be.
We can use the one.
Okay.
Do over that one.
Okay.
It will probably be a couple of weeks before we get the signs up.
What about the ones we took down before?
I think if you just had done that eight o'clock in the morning.
I don't think we took the signs. I think we changed out the, the parking limitation on the signs. But I'm gonna go look tomorrow and see if we still have them.
Trying to save money, you know?
I'd say that's exceptional service. So, there we go. Okay. Next item?
Railroad safety and quiet zone study.
Uh, for this next item, I'd like to reintroduce, uh, Mr. Paul Tour, Deputy Director of Public Works, who will be presenting this agenda report.
Thank you, Greg. Honorable mayor, members of the city council. This item pertains to, uh, railroad safety and quiet zone study. In our city, we have two railroad tracks. One is what is known as Union Pacific Railroad Main Track, which runs north-south. And other one is, uh, what is called as Ion Spur Line, which runs east from the City of Galt up to the mountains to the east. There are about thirty to thirty-four trains on the main track. So basically, you know, uh, every hour you got two or three trains going through that track during the whole day. So on the Ion Spur, you know, there is not fixed number of trains going on that. Sometime there is one train, sometime there are two. That changes. City council directed staff to go ahead and, uh, initiate the study for the railroad white zone. In September of twenty-ten, and authorized funding to proceed with the project. Staff solicited proposals. Four engineering firms submitted the proposals. The proposed project will consist of doing the study on the existing grade crossings. Under the federal railroad administration, they have a ruling where any train which comes to the F grade crossing, they have to sound the horn. That's the law. So every train, like I mentioned, we have thirty trains. That means on every crossing, when they cross that, they have to sound the horn, which is certainly a safety measure, but it's a nuisance at the same time of the residents. So with that in mind, uh, we evaluated the proposals and ranked the proposals. The scope of work for this study consists of substantial coordination with regional agencies such as federal regulation, uh, Federal Railroad Authority and California Public Utilities Commission. That's really the main crust of this study where you have to deal with those agencies because their approval or their consensus is essential before we put a quiet zone in place. So the consultant will go ahead and study. We will look at the traffic at each and every intersection. What are the required improvements? So once those improvements are identified, then we will submit an application, hold public hearing, and take it to the California Public Utilities Commission and Federal Railroad Authority, that's FRA. So these are the two main agencies which we have to deal with. Of course, Union Pacific Railroad, they are the train operators, so we have to deal with that agency. Additionally, this project will also be reviewed by Caltrans and MTRAC. So once we receive the proposals, we evaluate the proposal and rank the proposals. Based on a evaluation, we start the negotiation with a firm called Wilbur Smith and Associates. Wilbur Smith and Associates is a transportation engineering firm located in Bay Area. And they have the special expertise to deal with these kind of studies. Mr. Justin Fox, the project manager for Wilbur Smith, has done similar studies for more than six other agencies successfully establishing quiet zones. The, looking at the traffic volume and the funds available, staff decided that it's optimum use of the money just to focus on the main railroad track where we are getting not only thirty to thirty-five trains now, but maybe, maybe getting additional trains in the future. We did eliminate the other portion of like Ion Spur because there is not very much traffic activity. Once this study is established or prior zone is established, there will be a substantial amount of improvements which goes with this. Prior to establishing a zone, this study will identify the required improvements, uh, which will be a substantial cost to the city. Those improvements, we are talking about some signal, uh, improvements at the grade crossings, some mediums, some quiet. It's depending upon the traffic volume, how it comes. That's going to be the main cost of the project. So after discussing with Wilbur Smith and looking at the scope of work, we negotiated the price and staff is recommending Wilbur Smith, uh, to conduct this study for, um, amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Like I stated before, when we look at the proposals, Wilbur Smith is not the cheapest proposal. Their numbers are a little bit higher than the second proposal. However, based on their expertise and the experience, like I stated, they have extensive experience for the similar projects. Not only that, they have a demonstrated prior successful coordination experience with the railroad authority as well as federal, uh, railroad authority and UP, Union Pacific Railroad and California Public Utilities Commission. That's the key reason we are recommending that Wilbur Smith Associates, uh, should be recruited, uh, to conduct this study. With that, uh, mayor, I conclude my staff report. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Anyone?
Um, excuse me. As I recall, this was, uh, money coming from a grant, correct?
Yeah, the proposed funding for this project, uh, city development broad grant fund for this project. So we have seventy-five thousand dollars of community block development grant funds set aside for this project. And we are awarding a contract for fifty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars.
Thank you.
Wow, something under budget. Great. Any other comments?
Uh, the, the infrastructure changes you're gonna be doing, where are those money's coming from?
Basically, we have seven grade crossings in the staff report along the main road. So those, the intersections are listed in the staff report. We will be looking at all seven grade crossings along the main road, uh, main railroad track which runs north-south.
Right. The question was where are the money's coming from to take care of the infrastructure changes that may be required?
I didn't tell Paul that part relative to the proposed budget. I took care of that. We've, uh, included two hundred thousand dollars in CDBG funding, uh, which we received at the, the last part of the, of the upcoming fiscal year toward those improvements. If that, those funds prove to be inadequate, then other potential funding source would be measure A funds or local transportation, uh, act funds.
Okay, but not general funds? It's gonna be coming from separate?
No, there would be road improvement type, type funds which we brought to council as part of, uh, discretionary act to award the construction contract when we get to that point. But we need to do the study right now in order to come up with the potential designs to get to that point.
Thanks, Greg.
Any other questions? I feel like I have to ask you to elaborate on, there's like thirteen thousand dollars difference between the two bidders. Uh, I heard the good things you said about, uh, Wilbur Smith. Happen to know that Interwest did Elk Grove, uh, their quiet zone. And, you know, budget is such a big item. Can you elaborate on why you feel that they're going to be worth the extra thirteen thousand dollars?
Uh, yes, mayor. Uh, when we look at the proposals, uh, like I stated, Wilbur Smith is an experienced firm with a demonstrated experience in, uh, dealing with the regional authorities such as, uh, Federal Railroad Authority. Yes, Interwest has done that work. And Interwest firm has done only one railroad zone, that's for City of Elk Grove, as opposed to Wilbur Smith, which has done, you know, plenty of, uh, you know, such studies. Just the project manager itself has done over six or seven studies in the area. So really, like I stated before, it's not the cost of what we are paying for the services, it's the cost of the improvement which are coming down the line. What we need to do, the improvements, that's based on this study that will establish what kind of improvements we can. Basically, we got to do the selling to the Federal Railroad Authority as well as California Public Utilities Commission. This forum has a substantial connections with those agencies because this is what this gentleman does. This is all he does. And they have connections, they have experience, and they have, you know, basically credibility with those agencies. Interwest is a good forum. They will be perhaps suitable for the next phase of the project where we're going to design the improvements, what are identified as part of this study. So that's why we are recommending, it's, we are spending a little bit more money at this stage. However, we are pretty confident that we will have the savings during the construction phase of that project.
You think you can make up for the difference in?
In what we are paying to the consultant. We are pretty confident that we will make up for those savings during construction phase of the project.
Any other questions? Pardon me? Come to the podium, please.
Baldwin again. And the reason this is coming up is because the train noise mostly, the whistles. Could you tell me what the whistles are supposed to be like on the trains when they come through the stops? To stop the intersections?
Yeah, basically, when they come in, it's not they have to stop. The minute.
Not stop, but I meant the whistles.
Yeah. The whistles, basically, they are supposed to blow horn. And there is certain decibel, which is, I believe it's seventy-nine decibels. That's what they are supposed to, you know, uh, blow the horn on.
How, what, what are the sequence?
The sequence is the minute they enter into that, before they enter into the, uh, grade crossing, they are supposed to blow the horn. And the, once they enter in, then they have to blow, blow the horn again.
How, how many shorts, how many longs?
That I do not know.
Right. The, and that's the first question.
Address is, it, it really doesn't matter because with Galt, one of the issues, the crossings are so close together, it becomes one long horn all the way through town.
You see, that, that.
There's a sequence, I believe it's three, five, and three, but.
I understand. But you see, that's what's so annoying. That's why everyone is up in arms. Because is it regulation to blow those short horns and long horn? Even though we're so close, by the time you start the second one, you, you're still in the first one. So why hold it down? Why not still make it the shorts and the long and go through two of them if not? Why not still make it the shorts and the long, and go through two of them, if not three, and that eliminates some of the noise? And that's what everyone's complaining about. Now, and I'm just, and this, I'll tell you, these people going through these, these railroad crossings have a personality of their own, their, their engineers are all different. One goes toot, 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 for like, all through them, wakes everybody up, it's like they wanna do it. Some, like you suggested, hold that thing down for one for five blocks.
Al, Al, is this a question, or is this-
I wanna know, okay, that was my first question, to, to explain why you're doing the, the, uh, there, is this the reason? Because of the noise? That's the first one, and if it is, that's why I wanted to get it out. Second one is, if you're fifty feet away, is a hundred and ten decibels gonna hurt you?
You mean physically hurts your ears, or what?
Yeah, well, yeah, your ears, and your, your, uh, your way of life. Will, will it affect you when those horns blow steady? Will it affect it? Within fifty to seventy-five feet of that, that horn?
Well, it was trying to make it go away.
Well, I, I understand, you see, that, these are the questions that I'm hoping maybe the study's going to bring up. You have a new senior residence opening up fifty to seventy-five feet away approximately, with nothing in between, and they're gonna get full blast of that, not counting the houses around there, and this is why we're up here discussing this.
That's right.
Now, I just wanna make sure when you do the study, you may laugh about this, Randy, but I'm curious, this is so serious to some of these people, they move out of the area if they can.
No, Al, I, I do not mean to disrespect you or anyone else. What I'm laughing about is, you said you had two questions and you're telling stories. So, when, when we get to that point, if it's, gets approved, then I'm sure that you'll wanna be on the committee if we end up having a committee.
Well, I, I just want it open so the public can understand, it's not just a matter of putting in a silence thing, okay?
I'll talk to you later about it.
Well, I, okay.
Thanks Al. Do we have another speaker?
If I may.
Surely.
Good evening Mayor and City Council. Um, actually-
Can you state your name real quick?
I'm sorry, yes, my name is Mike Codge, you probably know me as a quiet zone guy. But first of all, I, I have several comments, and I'll try to make it very brief. Um, this quiet zone is in a very important study, and, uh, I believe that you have to trust Greg and his staff to have done a, a correct analysis of the various bidders that presented their proposals to him. And yes, there was a different bidder that did the work in Elk Grove, and, and you know that far because you've actually talked to them and done some investigation. The, the important thing here is that you can't do anything without a proper study. And what this gentleman here just talked about is very critical, and that is, it's not just the engineering study, because there's a lot of people out there that could do the engineering study for you. It's what they bring to the table in their ability to be able to negotiate and communicate and work with the various bodies that are involved in this process. It is a very complicated process, and he outlined it well. As to Al's question about the whistle, Al, your questions are legitimate, if you wanna go read, there's a two thousand and five Railroad Act, and you can read, and it'll tell you how long the whistles have to blow and everything else. The bottom line is, regardless of a quiet zone, the engineer of the train has the right to blow that horn anytime there's a safety or pending safety, uh, situation. So, even with a quiet zone, if that engineer thinks there's something dangerous is gonna happen, you're gonna hear the horns blow. But, you won't hear them blow thirty times seven, uh, throughout the day and night. And so, my recommendation is the council to adopt their recommendation, go forward with the study, and especially if the study, if the people that do the study can leverage you some reduced costs on the engineering work that has to take place after that. So that's my recommendation to the council, and I think Greg and his team deserve some kudos for, for getting through this.
I appreciate that, and thanks for making those points. If anybody is, uh, near expert on this, it would be you. Thank you. Okay, I think we've heard, uh, the discussions, I'm ready for a motion. Do you want, would you read the, uh, recommended action?
I will. Authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Wilbur Smith Associates to conduct a railroad crossing safety and quiet zone study along the Union Pacific Railroad's main line corridor in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action, is there a motion?
I move.
Okay.
Accept.
It's been-
I'll second.
Made and seconded, uh, roll call vote please.
Vice Mayor Powers? Aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Uh, Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item?
Presentation of the Central Galt Corridor Rehabilitation and UPRR Parking Lot Preliminary Design.
Where's everybody going?
I kinda like this, like, about all my staff, they're doing all the work. This time I'd like to present, uh, Senior Civil Engineer Bill Forrest, who, Calendar Associates will make the presentation for the Central Galt Corridor.
Thank you Greg. Uh, again, I'm Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer, I'm the project manager for, uh, this project for the City of Galt. I'd like to introduce Daniel Miller, who's the project manager for Calendar Associates, and Ben Woodside, the principal, who will be giving, uh, the presentation for, for you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for having us here and, and for your time tonight. We've really enjoyed working on the project, working with staff, and working with the public and the business owners on this very important project for you folks. Presentation outline tonight, I'm gonna go through a brief project background, talk about what we've been doing to date. Um, we're gonna talk about the proposed and preferred designs of the project, we're gonna talk about the next steps, and then, I have the questions at the end, but I'm gonna go through a lot of information, I'd be happy to answer any questions as I go along if you don't wanna wait to the end, that's fine with me. I am gonna try to get through in twenty minutes or less, and so I will be just briefly touching on a lot of things, I can also stop and get into more depth if you, if you folks would like to at any point. To talk about the pieces of the project, and there is four main pieces. The first piece is talking about the expansion and renovation of Palm Park along this area here. Um, this is a, a, a plan view, uh, aerial photo of the downtown, over here is ninety-nine, this is C Street coming through, and then that's Fourth Street, just to help orient you to this map, because I'll be referring to this map throughout the presentation. The second part is providing gateway features at Civic Drive and at Lincoln Way. The third part is C Street improvements, and the fourth part is Lincoln Way improvements. And the real genesis, if we could sum up what the genesis of the project is, is the city has, uh, done a lot of work in the Old Town area and throughout downtown, and now with the new interchange project, and the idea is, how do we tie these projects together? How do we draw folks in from the freeway through town, stay here, eat here, shop here? And how can streetscape improvements and park improvements and those type of things encourage that type of use? The outreach that we've done so far, these are the steps that we've, we've been through so far. First, we went through, there was a previous plan that was done before we started working on the project, that was done in two thousand and eight, so we took the information from that and all the hard work that went into that first C Street corridor plan. We've done two community workshops to discuss the different alternatives, we've been at a stakeholder meeting with the business owners, um, we also have met with two different commissions and the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, and then tonight, we're here presenting to you folks. And the idea is that we're here to present this preferred plan that hopefully incorporates all the comments that we've received, and to now listen to the comments that you have, get direction from you folks so that we can, and also from the public that's here tonight, so that we can incorporate it, finish the design, come back to you with a, a phase plan and, and cost of the project. Three primary goals that have been driving us throughout the project. First goal, provide a draw from C Street through Central Galt to Old Town, that's, as already, I already stated. Improve parking specifically along Lincoln Way and in the Old Town area, and improve the vehicular and pedestrian experience throughout this corridor. First piece I'm gonna talk about is Palm Park. We heard time and time again, in talking with the public, and also in our experiences, parking reg planners, there's nothing like having that central green space, you already have it with the Palm Park that's located right here. Expanding on that, making it a, a really special place, it could be a real draw for the downtown. And so we did hear from folks at the various workshops, please provide passive use spaces, not playgrounds, not splash play, not skate parks, passive elements. Also though, provide opportunities, to, uh, provide opportunities to draw people to this park, not just recreating areas, but is there something else, why would I wanna go to this park? So what, can we create a gathering space, what can we do in this park? And then provide additional parking for Old Town, this is a pretty big piece of real estate, can we use that for, for additional parking? This is the, what we're calling the preferred plan that does incorporate the comments that we've received. I've switched the way it's oriented now, so basically, this is Fourth Street here, C Street comes in, north is heading this way, and here's the railroad track through here. So this represents the preferred plan, and it stretches all the way from A down to F Street down through here. Um, the first big thing I'd like to focus on is the parking lot. So if, if we put this UPRR parking lot, where should it go? Um, we did need to provide space for a future train station, we don't know how big it is, we don't know exactly when it's gonna come in, but we do wanna provide for that future train station, and this is about the size of what the old train station was. So the parking lot needs to be in, close to that, as well as being close to the down, uh, the Old Town area and the shopping. So it made sense to put the parking lot right here at the corner of C and Fourth, and that's where it's been shown before, and we agree that's a good, a good spot for it. Um, what that does then is splits the park space into two areas, so that provides a good opportunity to split up those uses, as I was saying before. An area for passive space, more quiet areas, um, associated with Galt Place and, and some of the active adult opportunities that could be there, as well as then we could provide on the other part of the park, a gathering space that relates well to Old Town. I'm gonna zoom in on the northern part. The gathering space, folks like the idea of a, of a bandstand, there was one there before, they like the idea of bringing a bandstand back, make, not encouraging homeless to hang out there, but something that people could go there for, uh, music, go there for gatherings. One of the comments that we received was to change the orientation, so this new preferred plan changes the orientation so the sun is no longer in the, uh, visitors' eyes as it was shown before, so we did make that revision. Spinning off of that main central area is two, uh, wide concrete paths that could be wide enough to, to drive on, be wide enough to, to put the farmer's market there, or other art shows, or other things, and still provide enough room to walk by on the paths. Uh, moving over to the parking lot, just zooming in on it, providing a parking lot with approximately a hundred and twenty spaces, and if we take that hundred and twenty, along with providing additional parking along Fourth Street, there's a, a opportunity, I'm gonna back up a slide, to, to nose-in more angled parking all along Fourth Street, and then I'll, continuing on here, it's approximately a hundred and sixty-five parking stalls that could be added to this part of town. Moving on down to the south, a more passive part of the park with meandering paths, uh, picnic area, maybe, maybe a contemplative rose garden, um, and then the historical advisory committee suggested that we incorporate interpretive panels, so those are now incorporated, uh, incorporated in the plan. So if we created now this draw, this central gathering place, this special place here in Old Town that complements Old Town, how do we then start pulling people down there? So, we first start at the Civic Gateway, down here at the corner of Civic and C Street. The things we heard from folks at the meetings, something that draws people into the corridor, and something that reflects the character of Galt. I'm gonna zoom in now, this is Civic, and this is C Street. What this black line shows is, is a rough limit of the interchange project, that is not our project, we're not part of that, but it does graphically represent what it's gonna look like when it's done, and it is impacting the existing island where the existing entry monumentation is there, so it does need to be moved, we do need to find an oppo, another opportunity for that. And it, it made sense, clear back in the two thousand and eight plan, they were looking at this intersection to, to turn into a monumental entry, and so we're showing that as an, as an option, or a, you know, a great opportunity to turn this, this, uh, intersection into that monumental gateway entry to Galt. Increase in, uh, better landscaping at the corners, uh, increasing or making some special pavement in the intersection, but most importantly, there's an opportunity to provide a, a gateway into the downtown, and we heard that from folks. We wanted a gateway, but we don't want a gateway like everybody else, we want something that's, that is more special to us. They liked the open metalwork, they didn't want real heavy monumentation, something that reflects the metalwork of Old Town, the metalwork of the water tower. Also included in this gateway is, is signage, saying you've arrived at downtown, um, indicating these different civic, uh, sections along C Street. So that's the Civic Gateway, as we move down C Street, this is a cross section through the existing C Street, it's a fairly wide paved, uh, cross section, we have a fourteen-foot turning lane, uh, travel lanes a twelve foot, bike lane, parking, five-foot sidewalk, and then the right-of-way is right on the back of sidewalk. So if we do any improvements along C Street, it has to be within the right-of-way so that we don't impact the, the businesses along C Street. Things we heard from folks, keep the traffic moving through town. On-street parking in certain areas is expendable, especially where they were saying that there's a lot of used car sales and things like that going on where it wasn't needed for the businesses, those could be used for other things if we need to. Provide enhanced pedestrian crossings, the, the crossings just weren't safe, they wanted to have something done along those crossings. And then provide a consistent feel through C Street to draw all these folks in, to tell them there's special things along the way, and to provide landscaping but don't block the businesses or the streetlight. So, on the other ones I showed you, those were the preferred plans, because we received pretty minor comments and we were able to incorporate those. For the C Street, I do wanna take a step back and show you the options that we presented to folks, because there were some different comments and opinions on it. The three things, the three things that we looked at with them was, a, a no median option along C Street, having a full median along C Street, and then a hybrid option along C Street. So the first one briefly to look at is the no median option, which is, this is a plan view along C Street of a typical part of C Street, um, providing special pavement like a stamped concrete, or something indicating the turn lane as well as the pedestrian crossings, um, to, to give them a more safer feel and to help, uh, push traffic through. If you, uh, cut a cross section through C Street, there again is that turning lane, it's the same as it was, the same width, the travel lanes haven't changed, and the bike lanes haven't changed, so we didn't change the travel widths. But if we take that parallel parking away on the sides there, there is an opportunity to then put some street trees, some additional streetlights, banners, landscaping, there is a great opportunity to make it a nicer experience along C Street, especially if you're a pedestrian. You're not walking right on the road now, now you have your own special bifurcated sidewalk to walk along C Street. Second option to look at was, uh, the full median option. And that would be to have full median down C Street except for at some of the major turning areas, um, it allows the opportunity for more trees down the middle, lights down the middle, monumentation down the middle. We received comments on this that folks, um, well, to back up for, for a second, folks liked the, uh, no median option, um, better than they liked the full median option, because they were concerned with the full median that you can't turn into these other parking lots. If you take the turn lane out, you're only able to turn in, in farther intervals, so they, they didn't really like that full median option. But the one thing they did like about the medians was providing these safe havens for pedestrians crossing the street. So not only have we provided special paving to indicate where the crosswalks are, but we've given them a, a haven in the middle. To cut a cross section through there, um, once again showing some different tree opportunities and some different light opportunities. Right now, we're showing a light that reflects the, the lights that are in the Old Town, we know there's a light that's been selected for the interchange, we haven't made the decision yet on what's best, the best light to use along C Street, so that's something we're looking to get input on, um, what that light should look like. The third option we looked at was the hybrid option, which basically is the nice stamped concrete in the middle for most of all C Street, providing the, the islands for the pedestrians, and then just smaller medians along the way. Cutting a cross section through there, showing another option for monumentation as you're progressing down C Street, could reflect the water tower, it could be lit, could have other signage on it. By providing this, this option, it's a little wider in the middle because we need to have an eight-foot median, and then still have the turning lane, so it does make the landscaping a little narrower on the sides at five foot. So we took the comments, folks on that one, they liked the hybrid option the best, but they were concerned once again about having the medians. And one of the comments that was brought up at the planning commission is that there is parade that come down on C Street, and if you have these, especially the full median option, that would really impact the ability to have parade. So, they liked having the safe havens for the pedestrians, but there was a lot of concern about having full medians all the way down. So, we took those comments and then prepared- So we took those comments and then prepared what we're calling this preferred design. Basically what the preferred, preferred design is, is it takes the best of all. It has the stamped paving in the middle for the turn lane. It has the, the smaller medians at the pedestrian crossings. It brings out the landscaping on the sides with street trees and still keeps the lanes the same, the same length along the way, or the same width and keeps that traffic moving through. To cut a cross section through that, it, it, it also provides that landscaping on the side to put trees and to put streetlights. One important note that was also brought up on the earlier designs is we showed shrubs all the way down C Street. And there was a concern, hey, if you show all these shrubs, how are we going to maintain all that? So one of the things we incorporated in the preferred plan is only putting shrubs areas, ornamental planting along where the trees are. And in between the trees, we can do that same stamped pattern, which is a great place to put trash cans, benches and others, and lights and the other monumentation. Moving down on C Street, once we get to the, between like Seventh and Sixth Street, this area is unique because there's not a turn lane that's along that area, but the, what, the, the section is really wide and then there's parallel parking that's needed along both sides. So there is the opportunity to push out the landscape for the trees, still provide room for parallel parking along this area and the lanes remain the same, but there would not be a turning lane. And that's how it continues into Old Town. In Old Town, there is no turn lane in the middle. So there's an opportunity for that. And this is a cross section through that, showing those two travel, 12-foot travel lanes, the bike lane and then that parallel parking. Also, there may be some ADA access issues on some of those buildings that are right on the sidewalk. By widening these areas, it allows us to change those sidewalk grades and deal with some of the ADA access issues along those businesses. So that's along C Street. Coming up on the next landmark feature on Lincoln Way, there's another opportunity there to lead people towards Old Town and provide another gateway. This is once again the preferred design. And what, what folks seem to like is on this side, on the west side of the intersection, putting a small median, reconfiguring the corners just slightly and putting in another arch. And then indicating really importantly that you're entering another district. It seemed from folks, especially if you're from out of town, seems like it stops there at Lincoln and what goes on beyond that. So providing something that draws folks on beyond Lincoln. Last but not least is the improvements on Lincoln Way. Right now, there is two travel lanes and there is a median and there's parallel parking on both sides with sidewalks on both sides. What we heard from folks, provide more parking for customers, provide a mid-block crossing. That was really important. How do we get folks across to the businesses on both sides? Improve access to the B Street lot and address the sidewalk drainage problems. There's a few drainage problems along the businesses that would like to be, folks would like to have dealt with. To help with this, we, we looked at two design alternatives, an all-angled parking and then looking at outside the box and, and can we do something else and maybe an angled and parallel. First is the all-angled. If we look at that same cross section, here's the right-of-way line and here's the right-of-way line on this side. To put in the all-angled parking, we would have to squeeze the travel lanes down to 15 feet to fit that parking in. And we start encroaching on the, on the adjacent property owners and start squeezing down those walkways. So folks were concerned about that. They still liked the wider walkways. They wanted that nice pedestrian experience. So we started looking outside the box, like I said. And what if we did angle on one side and then did parallel on the other? So that's the second option that we looked at. Also, you see in the plan view here, for both options, we showed the opportunity for a mid-block crossing here. One of the comments that we received was, one of the previous plans was there's sawtooth along here. So it would be hard to clean the street. So we, on this preferred plan, we've showed a smooth curb along this edge and along this edge. And we are showing this preferred plan because it seemed to be most liked by folks. Couple of the positives is it, it, it allows for this great crossing. It takes the median out. It helps traffic flow through. A couple of the drawbacks is to put angled parking in, we still have to provide ADA parking stalls. And if it, to provide for the ADA parking stalls and the, the center crossing, the parking count in total on Lincoln would not change. If you put a crosswalk in there right now, you would lose stalls. So you do, and that's against gain stalls, you get your crossing and you keep the same amount of stalls. But there's no net add to those stalls. So it became really important, how do we get the access onto the B Street parking lot? So it's better for folks, better for folks that are trying to visit this area. So I'm going to zoom in on that access. Right now, the park comes, smud park comes out to about that line. There is an opportunity to push that back, push that curb back and provide a turn lane. So if you come off A Street, you can come in and enter B Street. And with good signage, good monumentation and safe crossings both here and across Lincoln, it opens up the ability to, to have good access to those stalls on the B Street parking lot. Cutting a cross section through, by providing angled parking on one side, having those turn lanes and then the parallel parking on the other side, we still get to keep our nice wide sidewalks on both sides. That's basically it. I've hit my time mark on the mark right at 20 minutes. This is the next steps that we're doing. We're going to be, as I said, presenting, taking your comments. We're going to be finishing the design, working on how that design relates to the project budget and then coming back with, with, with numbers to show you and how it potentially could be phased and getting some priorities from you. We're also going to be beginning the environmental document and getting ready to present to you in about a month, month and a half. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Looks good.
Thank you for the information.
Definitely.
The update.
All right.
Is there any suggestions or comments as far as changes you'd like to see or things you disagree with what they're doing? Now's the time to voice those opinions as they go into more of the, the preliminary design work. It's obviously easier to change at this point, not that we can't make changes down the road, but if there's definitely some opinions about what you've seen, please voice those tonight.
I would just say that I like the things that the people brought forward, the improvements. I think I agree with, with all of them. One of the things I'm wondering about though, down on Fourth Street, the parking is not that convenient to either Galt Place, the apartments or the restaurant.
Want to go back to that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you, are you referring to the new park, the proposed parking lot?
Yeah, unless I didn't see it right. It looked like the parking, the new parking lot is, is right there at Fourth and C, yeah, Fourth and C Street.
I'm going to zoom out on the whole thing. Yeah, it's between C and D Streets along Fourth would be that, that 120 parking space parking lot. There would be additional parking stalls along Fourth Street in front of Galt Place on the park side as well, down along where E Street hits it. But you're right, the parking lot, the main parking lot would be in this location here.
In fact, right now, don't we have, we have parking already on Fourth Street on both, both sides.
Parallel parking, not, not angled parking.
And so that would give us more parking.
On the west side, there would be diagonal parking. We also just drive some additional diagonal parking on B Street just north of the, of the restaurant building to provide, I think it was nine more spaces. That was painted just, you know, like last week or this week.
There's 24 striped, parallel parking stalls on Fourth. And then by changing it to angled, we can increase that upwards of 47 stalls.
Well, our experience has been from Lincoln Way that that's been a big issue is having plenty of parking. And I know that I have been down Fourth Street when there was a funeral at the South Funeral Home and there was no, there was no parking from, I'd say, what is that, B Street all the way down to A Street.
From D down to A?
No, not that.
Oh, B.
B.
B to A, this, this way.
Yeah, maybe than C Street. That's, and if you were going to the restaurant, then you would end up having to walk a block. And people are, are not used to walking anymore. So I can see us coming back in another year saying, we need parking down there. That would be my, my biggest concern and comment. And I think I heard that from the owners of the Galt Place too. They were looking for more parking. And as you said, it's easier to change the drawings now than it would be later.
I think the, the parking is, is much more convenient for Galt Place than it is for Brewster's, as you see, actually part of the parking lot is directly across from that corner restaurant that would be at Galt Place. I think on the Brewster's side, we are looking at additional parking outside of the railroad property around that, that restaurant that helps add parking in that area as well.
Okay, just keep that in mind. That'd be my only comment.
A huge priority.
You know, we're redoing Lincoln Way for parking more than what?
Well, for example, north of B Street, we're, we're adding diagonal. That's approximately 11 spaces, which previously is, in fact, I don't think the parallel parking even extends that far. I think it ends at B Street. So as Greg mentioned, we've added nine spaces on the north side of B. We're adding 11 north of B in, in the area of the funeral home, adding another 11. South of there, there's approximately, I believe about 24 existing diagonal spaces on the east side of Fourth Street.
Does that include ADA handicap parking?
Existing, there, there is no existing ADA parking.
But you will be incorporating.
Yeah, we, we would incorporate it.
Okay. Does that will cause you to lose some body parking?
We have factored that into the design, making sure that we've got that covered.
That's my only comment. Okay, I think, I think you've heard us.
Thank you very much.
I think you've already done the, the work with all your workshops and people thought of more things than we could ever think of. Thank you for the presentation.
Great, thank you.
We will move on to communications. Do we have any written communications? If not, we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Roll call.
Board members Powers.
She had to leave with good illness.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Any public comments?
I have no speaker sheet.
Okay. Consent calendar?
We have two items tonight. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 19th, 2011. And the second one, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants.
Recommend motion to approve.
Second.
First and seconded, roll call.
Council, Mayor Powers, something for Singleton.
Aye.
Council member Shelton?
Aye.
Something for Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Or board?
That's okay. Whatever you want to call me.
The next item, the departmental.
Loan consolidation agreement between the City of Galt and the City of Galt Redevelopment Agency.
And that is identical to what we covered under the city, under the city's agenda. So we would ask for the board to take the same action as the agency board this evening as well. So the recommendation is that you would approve the loan consolidation agreement of the internal debt between the city and the redevelopment agency.
And adopt the resolution.
Correct. Is there a motion? Does that say?
A motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Board members Powers, Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Pass. We will now adjourn from redevelopment to the regular city council meeting. City clerks report.
Just a couple reminders, actually quite a few reminders. This Thursday, May 5th is the Business Fair along with the Farmer's Market at the Galt Community Park from 5:00 to 8:00. When you hit the light? Please keep the light. From 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, again out at the Galt Community Park. On May 9th, we're having the event, the community gathering, the building our community together with all the different agencies coming together out at McCaffrey Middle School from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. All the agencies that are, that represent Galt, the school boards, the fire departments, the police departments, the library, free hot dogs for the community. On May 11th, there's the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. On May 12th, the Planning Commission meeting at 6:30 in the council chambers. There's also a council procedures meeting at 9:00 AM here in the council chambers for the city council. And that takes us to our next city council meeting. I also want to mention on May 21st, the household hazardous waste shredded event from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM out at the Galt Market Grounds.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments by staff? Staff comments?
No comments this evening.
No comments? We wore you out.
No. We're looking forward to some of the upcoming events, Farmer's Market and the community gathering. And we have budget workshop coming up. Staff's been working fast and furious on getting a document out to the council review and present to the, the community. So been busy.
Okay, we know you have. Comments by city council members? I will start with you, Councilman Singleton.
Well, I think what I was going to say is something that you're already going to mention, so I'll wait for you.
Oh, okay. If I don't mention it, it's okay.
I won't jump in, believe me.
Councilman Shelton?
Yes, I have one item. This is the Shriners Hospital Cool Truck Show this weekend. If you haven't had the opportunity to see some, I mean fantastic trucks, you ought to go by. You're going to be impressed. And you listen to some of these guys that work on these trucks, the truckers, I'm telling you, it is awesome. And I know we have a lot of functions going on over the next, you know, four or five days that just stop by. This money that's raised, you know, there, there is a kind of a donation at the gate, but it does go to the Shriners Hospital. Those kids really need it, so, and I'll be down there volunteering my time a little bit. So, thank you.
And one more time, that's.
It's the 6th and 7th, so I guess that's Friday, Saturday.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that forward. Councilman Cruz?
I just wanted to extend a thank you to the city clerk and her staff for their efforts to get up the Bill of Rights and Constitution in our lobby before this meeting, this evening. For those who haven't seen it, it really looks sharp. If you get a chance when you leave, take a look.
Thank you very much. It's my turn and I have a list here. But I'm going to start off with asking the council to consider agendizing, having an intern, a student intern. And Mariah is here tonight. She's interested in being our first intern. We will agendize this for discussion and more details at the next meeting if the council agrees to, to pursue it. Mariah, you, you want to stand up since you've suffered through all of this tonight and everything? Mariah, do you want to say a few words? And your parents are here, I believe?
I just have a few documents for you, like my work permit.
Okay. Okay, I'll take those. I saw you getting up. I thought you wanted to make a speech, but this is it. Okay. All right, thank you, Mariah. So what I would ask the council's consensus on is to agendize this project for the next council meeting. At that time, you will get more details. I have talked to the Galt High School. There's a chance we could get some high school credits depending on our curriculum. I've talked to our human resources person and we can work that out. I would take some of my traveling money and put it into a fund for stipend. So anyway, I'll save the rest of the details until next meeting. So with your approval, we will have it on the next agenda. And thank you all for suffering through this long meeting and coming tonight. Also, I wanted to mention that the city manager and I have met with the Gathering Place. That's one of the faith-based churches here in town. They're interested in leasing the two homes that we acquired through the Boys and Girls Project. It would require staff to spend some more time and, and work on the details. And we would need permission from this council to spend more than two hours on putting together the information. Is there a consensus on that? Yes, no?
Sure.
That, that's it, sure?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we do have a consensus. So staff is able to spend some time to bring forth a, a more detailed plan. And finally, I want to mention that our city clerk has received an award from the, oh, she's received the 2011 Award of Distinction, got to get that in, by the City Clerks Association of California for her outstanding performance and contribu, contribution in the area of humanitarian and Good Samaritan services. And I would just like to mention, I mean, that's a lot of words, but I know that. And I would just like to mention, I mean, that's a lot of words, but I know that Liz is involved heavily with Lodi Memorial Hospital, she spends a lot of time on that, she's active in Kiwanis Club, which involves working with the youth. At Christmas, she finds the families that need a little extra help, she searches them out and finds ways to address their needs. And most of all, she puts up with all of us. By that, I mean city council members. Somewhere along the line, we sort of got the attitude that she's our private secretary, our cook, our everything else, so I think.
She cooks stuff?
Yeah, wow. You know, I saw that.
Orders are coming now.
So, I think we need to acknowledge that she is distinguished to us, too, and give her a hand for all the hard work. And, I believe, I'm done. If there are no other comments, we will, no other comments? Is there?
Go back into the call.
Oh, yeah, we will. The rest of you get to go home, we're going back into closed session. Thank you for coming.